Both. And those will be back in the future. According to Kalapulia tradition, people here have lived here since time immemorial. Indigenous people still live here today, having persevered through US-sponsored war displacement, genocide and oppression. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on. The Tuol'as in Kalapulia, the Kethlamet, the Clackamas, Tomwater, Malala, bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. We believe it's important to acknowledge the ancestors of this place and to recognize that we are here because of the sacrifices forced upon them. And remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We recognize the urban indigenous native first peoples community living in the metro area, which includes over 400 tribal nations. We also have a proclamation to make today. And that would be Director Martinez, I believe, right?
Yes.
You going to go to the podium or did you do there? Go for the podium. We're back.
The Hillsborough School District recognizes that people of Latinx descent contributed to our prosperity and cultures throughout the history of the Hillsborough School District. The Hillsborough School District honors the vibrant history and diverse cultures of Oregon's Latinx community as a central part of our state's story and shared across all Oregon communities. The Hillsborough School District celebrates this year's theme Esperanza, celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope, which invites us to celebrate Latinx heritage and to reflect on how great our tomorrow can be if we hold on to our resilience and hope. It encourages us to reflect on all of the contributions the Latinx community has made in the past and will continue to make in the future. It is also a reminder that we are strong together. The Board of Directors of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of September 15th, 2021 to October 15th, 2021 to be Latinx Heritage Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of Latinx Americans to the development and prosperity of our community.
El Distrito Escolar de Hillsborough celebra el mes de la herencia latina para honrar las historias, culturas y contribuciones que los latinoamericanos, cuyos ancestros de España, México, el Caribe, Centroamérica y Sudamérica. El Distrito Escolar de Hillsborough recuerda que esta celebración comenzó en 1968 como la semana de la herencia hispana bajo el mandato del presidente Lyndon Johnson y se promulgó como ley el 17 de agosto de 1988 bajo el mandato del presidente Ronald Reagan, abarcando un periodo de 30 días que comienza el 15 de septiembre y termina el 15 de octubre. El Distrito Escolar de Hillsborough reconoce que las personas y ascendencias latinas contribuyeron a nuestra prosperidad y cultura a lo largo de la historia del Distrito Escolar de Hillsborough. El Distrito Escolar de Hillsborough honra la vibrante historia y la diversidades, culturas de la comunidad latina de Oregon como una parte central de la historia de nuestro estado y es compartida en todas las comunidades de Oregon. El Distrito Escolar de Hillsborough celebra la tema de este año Esperanza, celebración de la herencia y la esperanza hispana, y nos invita a celebrar la herencia latina y a reflexionar como lo grandioso que puede ser nuestra provenir si nos apagamos a nuestra desilencia y esperanza. Nos alienta a reflexionar sobre todas las contribuciones que la comunidad latina ha hecho en el pasado y sigue haciendo en el futuro, también en un decoratorio de que juntos somos más fuertes. La Mesa Directiva de Hillsborough Escolar de Hills... La Mesa Directiva del Distrito Escolar de Hillsborough programa por la presente el mes de 15 de septiembre de 2021 a 15 de octubre del 2021 como mes de herencia latina. Exhortamos a todos los miembros de la comunidad a unirse a nosotros para reconocer las múltiples contribuciones y logros de los latinoamericanos a la prosperidad de nuestra comunidad. Thank you.
All right, we just... So it's on?
Yeah.
Those, you gotta be right about... So, thank you all for joining us in our very first board meeting back in person. Couldn't be happier to be here. Thank you for joining us. And this is also my first time sitting in this chair, so if I mess anything up, I appreciate your grace and patience. According to our parliamentarian, we do not need a motion to approve the agenda. We only have two items on the agenda today. Audience time and discussion time for our return instruction in the fall. For audience time, I have something that I am required to read, so I will do that now. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BDDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intent-to-speak card available at the top of the HSD homepage and submit it via the Google form to the executive assistant of the board or like fill it out here. Comments concerning published agenda items are limited to its designated place on the agenda, unless otherwise authorized by the board. Comments about non-agenda items will be heard at this time. Commenters should include their name and if speaking for an organization, the name of an organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with common purpose. Up to three minutes at the board's discretion will be allowed for individual comment. Commenters may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include Board Policy KL Public Complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. Comments aimed at state and federally protected classes shall be prohibited. Anger, rudeness, ridicule, obscene or profane language, impatience, lack of respect for others, and personal attacks are not acceptable behavior. Demonstrations in support or opposition to a speaker or idea are not permitted. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members. So we should probably change that now that we're not in the virtual world. Is anyone who would like to speak, please submit a public comment card. So if you haven't done that already and you would like to speak with us, now is your opportunity to turn in one of those to Beth or Rose. Rose or Beth? Okay, so if you would like to speak and you haven't yet filled out an intent-to-speak card, please turn it into Beth back there. There are also board members. If you haven't read them already, there are some comments submitted to us that are available in your board packet, and if you haven't yet, I encourage you to read those as well. Was that...? Yeah, so I feel about how much... About three minutes is gonna be fine because we don't have...
Right.
We had discussed maybe shortening it, but I don't think we need to. We would like to be able to hear from as many people as possible, but I believe that we can fit everyone in the allocated amount of time by going three minutes. I will say that board meetings are public meetings in the sense of the Oregon public meeting law. We conduct our meetings in view of the public, but there are meetings, they are not meetings of the public, they are board meetings that take place in public. We do not have to hear from the audience as part of audience time. It's something that we choose to do as a board, and we all appreciate it very much. It is not our time for Q and A, it is not our time for debate, it is our time to simply listen to what you have to say. So I... It is our intent for all of us to just listen intently to whatever you have to say. Beth, who's up first?
Chair Watson, thank you. I would like to let the board know that there are currently 14 people who have signed up to address the board, which if everyone does take their allotted time, that would be 42 minutes potentially, unless we receive some additional requests. Some of those folks did sign up online but aren't here in person. They may be attending the meeting virtually. So what I'm going to do is just in the order that they were received, I'm going to call names. If that person is here in the audience, you're welcome to go up to the podium to make your statement. If that person happens to be online, Rose will elevate them to panelist level so that they'll be able to speak and you'll be able to hear them. Okay?
So just so you guys know that there's a new Oregon law passed that doesn't really go into effect until January, but we're trying to accommodate as much as we can early, that you have to accommodate virtual testimony in the exact same way as you do people in the room, try to make it more accessible for everyone, maybe don't have to get childcare, maybe not to travel very far. So we are conducting this meeting on Zoom, it's being recorded, and there's a camera somewhere. Oh, right back there, right next to the projector. And we have the capacity for people to submit virtual live comment to be in the Zoom room as well. So Beth, who's up first?
Okay, Robert Stoddard.
And who would be after that?
After that is Sarah Denniston, if she is participating virtually, and if not, then Sylvia Pleistern.
You can go ahead. Just giving people a heads up, who's on deck and who's in the hole?
Can you guys hear me? All right. Before I begin, I would like to preface this by acknowledging the fact that the state has mandated masks in schools until otherwise stated. However, these are my thoughts regarding the matter and why you must cease to regulate social distancing restrictions when the decision is turned back to the school board.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. My name is Robbie Stoddard. I'm going to be a senior at Century High School in the upcoming 2021 school year. I'm on the cross-country swimming track teams and a number of speeches and debates. Someone who cares about my education, I believe that the social distancing restrictions has a much greater detriment than the benefits they provide. In the speech, I will go over how these practices harm the education processes, why they shouldn't take priority, and what practice suggests taking forward. In my personal experience over the past year and a half, distance and hybrid learning are huge barriers to the education process. And while I am glad to be going full-time in person in the fall, a large part of these barriers are still there, with the most glaring of which is the fact that it injures the ability of teachers and students to communicate. With masks and social distancing in the classroom, many of my teachers found it difficult to communicate, to understand what the students were saying, and the same thing applied to the students. We would ask the person in question to repeat themselves, and after a couple of times, it had to resort to yelling, which took a valuable class time, or us just giving up, which didn't resolve the matter. This made it very difficult to learn the subject matter, and I had to study for many hours at home to get a good grade in these classes. Additionally, with the one-way hallways, I was frequently late to quite a few of my classes due to having to walk all the way around the school for a classroom only a couple of doors down. We couldn't even get a drink of water because there was no time and all of the drinking fountains were shut down. As someone who hopes to get a degree in engineering, I must pass and understand several key classes such as calculus. With these guidelines, I fear that I might not have that chance. There aren't even the most necessary as well. All of the teachers and staff have been vaccinated and most of the student body as well. A study done by several universities in England showed that most of the deaths under the age of 25 had the underlying conditions. They also found that the death rate was about two per million people. This means that in the entire state of Oregon, we could possibly have two student deaths. These numbers are astronomically low for even just one person in our school district to die. The harm outweighs the benefits of the good caused by these practices in this case. So what should we do? Well, I think we should take a similar approach as the Amity School District. They're planning to have masks be optional once the decision is turned back over to the school districts. I think that those at risk should still have the option to wear masks or even make use of our online curriculum at Hillsborough Online Academy. But for the rest of us, it doesn't provide any noticeable help. So if you care about the education of our students, then please let us experience school the normal way. Thank you.
Is our next... Is our next participant available virtually?
Thank you, Robbie. Yes, do we have Sarah participating online? She may have submitted a statement, so.
Okay.
Next up then is Sylvia, and then after that will be Larry Dickinson. Sylvia Pleistern, sorry. I hope I said that right.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Pleistern. I am a parent of five children, all currently enrolled in the Hillsborough School District. I understand that currently your hands are tied concerning mask mandates for physical students. But respectfully, this is not my intention. I pulled this from the Oregon Health Authority and the CDC's Health Rankings, which is a third world action from the United Health Foundation. They found that children under 18 have 2% of the cases reported nationwide. In Oregon, that number was even lower at 1.3%. Admittedly, this summer, cases for children do make up about 3%. We've had 271 deaths in the entire United States, and people zeroed for 19, and exactly two in the state of Oregon since the pandemic began. In America's health rankings by the United Health Foundation, kids aged 15 through 19, the suicide rate is 24,000. That means that for the last latest available data, there were 172 deaths by suicide for people under the age of 19 in the state of Oregon. So if we are trying to mandate what is best for kids, I am trying to understand why the push isn't for giving kids normalcy for their mental health. So in light of this, I expect the Republicans to push for the Republican agenda. I expect the Hillsborough School Board to push for this community and the science that is in this community. I expect you to write to your governor and request local control and keep requesting local control, but you can't make decisions based on the scientific data that we have for this community. I'm also going to ask that if we're going to be revisiting this mandate monthly, that we do not, like we did with social distancing, that we do not give unions a promise that we will keep masking. Those unions bargaining that says mask mandates stay in place for the community. The CDC said it was okay for kids to go back to school in December 2020. Governor Brown asked that school districts follow that recommendation December 28th, 2020. I watched, as you voted no on that. So what guarantee do you have that you won't do the same thing? You also have local decisions you can make, such as social distancing, quarantining. Give kids the most amount of freedom, most chance to have normalcy, because what we do know, we don't know about the Delta variant. We do know about mental health. Thank you.
Larry Dickinson, followed by the Viles.
I'll just remind you that I know this is an emotional topic, but according to our rules in place, we're versed the line. Demonstrations in support or opposition of a speaker or idea are not permitted. So for what it's worth, try, I know it's emotional, try to restrain yourself if you can. Thank you, Larry.
Will I push a yes button here to start the time?
I think we have the timer.
All right. All right. Well, my name's Larry Dickinson, and I'm a parent here in HSD. I've been here.
Please speak right in the microphone, please, Larry.
What?
And please say, speak right into the...
This one?
Yeah.
All right. Well, okay, I'm a parent. I'm a parent here in HSD. I've been here for a while. I have kids in HSD for 15 years. I just had a few things to say. I know the school board, they volunteer, they work hard. I know they read all the emails that come from the public. I know they look at the Facebook posts. What I don't feel, and I think I speak a lot for teenagers because I'm around them probably more than most, they don't feel represented and the families don't today. I think we should be doing a lot more, and I've emailed about this, surveying the public, the families in the school district, and ask them what they want. I know other districts did, I mean, like Oswego did, many of the other districts, I can get lists of them. And when I talk to school board members, they say it's pretty even on the cited restrictions. But when you watch the surveys, they're not. They're like 90% to 10%. The other thing I think could be good other than that is more Q and A sessions. I think the school would probably made a lot of great decisions last year. A lot of times, we didn't know why. And a lot of rumors are out there. If they had some more Q and A sessions throughout the year, especially during these crisis times, it would make a big difference. I'm losing a lot, too many friends that are moving out because they don't have faith in the school district. They don't have a faith that they'll have schools of quality this year because they felt like they lost them last year. Last year was a horrible year for teenagers and teens. COVID did a lot of things that wrecked it for social life, mental health, and quality education dropped. That is not necessarily the school district's job to solve all that. But there is a balancing act, the school district has to make between safety and quality education. It felt like they leaned so far on safety that at least in the high school ages, they felt like they got hosed. They got, what, five or six weeks of school, couldn't see their friends, you know, the lunches are all goofed up. Probably if they figured out the bus system, they had more time, we could add more. Last, I hope the school district does push for more local control. We are a big school district. We are not a one-size-fits-all. And I feel sometimes we just lean back on what's easy. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kennebec and Dorothy Vile.
Hello, my name is Kennebec Vile. I'm a mother of four. We have done homeschool the past year because I did not agree with the mask and mandates that were put in place last year. I was lucky to be able to do that compared to a lot of other families. And not everybody has that opportunity to be able to do that with their kids. So I also agree that we should be able to ask you guys to please push back and help our kids. I appreciate that you guys are letting us speak today. I know that you guys are here for the safety of our kids and you're trying to do what's best and what you feel is best. That being said, I have great concerns with the backtrack of the guidance of Oregon Health Authority requiring the mask requirements and the restrictions put into place at schools. As Dr. Raymond Nicholas said, "The definition of insanity is doing the same things over and expecting a different outcome. Going back to the same CDC guidelines and expecting a different outcome is just flat out insane," end quote. These guidelines are not science-based, it's a political base. To put a one-size-fits-all protocol into place for mask mandates, quarantines, and testing, there's no longer a question that that risk for children from COVID-19 is significantly lower than the flu. As stated before, the death rate is at two, right? From ages zero to 18 in Oregon. The past year and a half has not been used as an opportunity to educate the population on how to live healthy and build a robust immune system using vitamins, minerals, and building respiratory health. That's been zero topic. Not a peep about what will help prevent illness and or support health when healing because here we are, human, we're supposed to get sick, it happens, what's the best way to handle it? Basic understanding of the body and its God-given natural immunity for disease and pushing the unnatural measures of the cure, although possibly well-intended at the beginning, is dishonest. A mask is not a fix-all, it's a false sense of security and it has far more negative health results physically and mentally than it does benefits. It takes away from our kids' freedoms of personal choice and their voice as an individual. Plenty of studies have been done showing the negative effects they cause. Developmentally, children need facial and hearing cues to learn basic speech and socialization. It's damaging young children in this area. Covering their airways has reported to be difficulty with breathing, hearing, and understanding, which has created fear and stress in our children, and doing so is damaging learning environment. OHA said children are required to attend school. Two of the most important tools the state has control over is vaccination and masking. Setting fines to schools and families for those who will not follow these nonspecific backed rules is uncalled for. I don't know about these other parents, but I decided to have kids because I was educated and I am capable, and I do not need the government to tell me that I'm not. Taking away any natural intuition that I have for my family's health and saying it's their way or the highway is not okay with me. I also wanted to add a reminder to everyone the damage the back and forth has done for mental health as well. The death total from suicide in Oregon ages zero to 18 in 2019 was 116, based on the OHA. And they say 2021 is not far behind. Thank you for your time.
All right, next up we have Dorothy Vile, and I'm just gonna let her hold the...
My name is Dorothy Vile, and for a while I felt like I could go to stores without a mask and that I could just walk and feel free. And now that they're requiring masks at stores again, I don't want to go anywhere because when I do, I just feel something on my face and I just don't like it. I wanna... I don't want to wear a mask at school anymore.
Is Gina Dimmitt online? How about Dylan Fakes? Okay, then how about Erin Gilbert? Is she online? Bruce Wilson, and I believe he is. Yes.
Fantastic. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please, send me your comment.
Thank you very much, Chair and Board Members Incumbents. Thank you for your continued work in the district and for all the newly elected members. Welcome back or welcome to your new position. You've never met me before. That's because I'm not a parent in your district, I'm a parent in the state of Oregon. I'm from the Westland-Wilsonville School District. I live at 22409 Southwest Newland Road. I had my kids at Stafford Primary, but I don't have my kids there anymore. I'd sure like to get them back there. I'd like to get them back into public school a lot. And I homeschooled my kids for those 18 months, and I had them registered again. This mask mandate really upturned us. I'm back to maybe starting my own school, homeschooling again. But I'm not gonna do that. It's not because of the mask. The mask is parted. But the other part is, parents have lost their trust in school boards. Not my school board, not your school board, all the school boards. You have abused the trust of the parents. We have placed a huge amount of trust in you taking care of our children on a day-to-day basis, and our willingness to give you that trust has been violated in every single school district in this state. Now, I want you to know me because like the rest of those parents sitting in the room and the rest of the parents sitting online right now watching this and listening, we have this great division. We think that there's two sides here. We think that there's the side that hates me because I'm against masks, then there's the side that loves me. We're all racist. You speak for every single parent in this district. We're all bosses. You speak for every single parent in this district. And throughout Oregon, we need local control back. Now, I know that you're gonna say that you don't have any power for local control. It comes from above. Well, that's wrong. Because your power comes from us. We have the power. The parents are telling you, the parents are telling you to stand up. I'm not saying you're spineless, but grow a backbone. You need to do this work for us and for our kids. And remember, they're not your kids. My kids are my kids. That lady in the front row on the white t-shirt, her kids are her kids. The little kid that stood up, that kid ain't your kid. That's somebody else's kid. And you work for all those parents. Now, you're gonna get funding from me and the rest of the parents. And please spend that money wisely. Frivolous expenditures aren't going to be tolerated. Adoption of one-sided political propaganda masquerading as curriculum won't be tolerated. The continued justification for misdeeds of the past and for what some intend to do going forward this year does not excuse unethical conduct for offenses against this community. We, your boss, will deal with you swiftly in the form of removal from office. Now, it's not a threat. That's just your obligation. You're duly elected by us, by the people. There's three things that are gonna happen in the state of Oregon. One of two sides is gonna acquiesce. Either the parents are gonna acquiesce and say, okay, we give up. Or you guys are gonna acquiesce and go, oh, shoot, these people are serious. Or there's gonna be litigation. Or there's gonna be a revolution. And I don't want any part of that third one. Revolution is violent. And what's gonna happen in the state of Oregon is you're gonna get left and right Hitlers. And I want no part of that. And I don't think any of you do either. So it's not time to acquiesce. It's not time to revolt. And it's not time to litigate. It's just time to listen and stand up. All of us need you. We elected you to do the job. Now, is there a timer going off?
Yeah, your timer's already expired.
Okay, I appreciate your time. And please also remember that what is considered acceptable or unacceptable is allowed regardless. That is the state law. And it was approved by the Supreme Court of the United States. So anyone can get up, I'm not gonna swear. But anyone can get up there and swear and be angry and raise their voice. It's, you may not find it acceptable, but it's allowed. It's the law. Take care, everyone. Thank you very much for your time. I wish you all the best of luck. Let's end this division. Let's come together and fix this. Let's not build a bridge. Let's fill in the chasm. And let's be able to walk across both sides of that division because that's what needs to happen here. Take care, everybody.
Chantel Wilkinson, followed by Sonya Feintek.
I wasn't planning on getting up. Can you hear me? But lately it seems like numbers are, are used significantly. So I'm a number here, but there are hundreds of.
Even though we called your name, could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. It's Chantel Wilkinson. I'm a mother of four kids going in school this year. Every year I question, I wanna pull them out. And every year I feel like they are a bigger benefit from being inside the school versus pulling them out, even though I can. But I made a few points as I was listening to the speakers. And I'm still not intelligent. So I hope it comes off logical. But I feel like we're in the building of an iceberg of concerns that that just keep building up. And we haven't even addressed most of them. I think right now we're just concerned with the obvious COVID. And that makes sense. Most of us are concerned. And most of the, all of us are concerned and trying to do what's best. The problem is, I think that the front and center of these things, problems are not being addressed because there's saying unfolding knowledge based on data or science is the excuse behind so many things. When data also suggests, and a new Washington Post from Dr. Mandy Gandhi, that we're advocating right now for masks to be removed from children because preliminary data suggests that masks are doing more harm than good. So if we're gonna go with data that's constantly changing and the difficulty knowing what is right and what is wrong, I think that's right now our, our issue should be based on what we feel like is the overall iceberg condition concern that's presented, which is the mental health, the safety of these children who are, as we see in numbers, not being affected the way the adults are. Instead, we're acting like adults and presenting that adulthood on our children, expecting them to respond like us. They're just enjoying their childhood. So as a parent, I also feel like the local decisions that maybe you can do, because I do appreciate that the, the difference what happened from going from being in my home where the mental health issues got worse, to letting them be in the school this, it was amazing. They were so flexible. The teachers were willing to adapt. The children adapted within a week for kindergartners. My kindergartner loved it, but he hates the mask. He actually feels less likely to go. I have to argue with him every morning. It's okay. Today we'll find something fun. Now, it shouldn't be a problem. Also, local decisions, social distancing cohorts, outdoor masks, these are things that I believe the school district can do more. So we can see more of this benefit. These decisions, I think, can get, like Sylvia said, don't give the union the promise that they give of social distancing to lead out. I feel like we always saw the Portland, and I'm sick of it. Portland is a Hillsborough. Hillsborough has its own difficulties, but we're also huge. We have this massive influence that I really felt can do so much good. So we need to question these. We need to put a Q and A where multiple parents, not at 2:00 in the afternoon, can't come and be here, but they have an opportunity to hear these, hear these comments, question, answer, so that we can get a specific detailed plan in place that can help our children. I really believe we can lead out on that. And for me, I feel like, thank you for all that you do. I really feel like the more we move forward, I can do this math. The more we move forward, the better it is for both our teachers, our families, and hopefully for you. Thank you.
Sonya Feintek.
Hello. My name is Sonya Fentish, and I'll make this brief because I got this thing on my back. So I just have a few questions, and I am gonna direct it to the board because before this new mask mandate, not really a mandate, don't know really what it is, came through, there was a lot of movement happening in meetings like this all around the state where the option was being offered because of the parental consent to make masks optional and things like that. But then with this new thing from the governor, that's kind of been removed. But I still believe that you have a lot of power and you have a lot of people to answer to. So you need to realize the power that you do hold. So my questions are, how long do you plan on following the governor's ever-changing goalposts? How do you feel about our next-door neighbors in Idaho having mask-free school, no restrictions enforced on their students? Do you think children are large vectors of transmission? Can I see the data on that? Have you seen the data on that? What is the end goal? Zero cases? Does anyone realize that's impossible? Have you looked at the statistics showing that there is no discernible uptick of transmission in schools even at the height of COVID in summer? In summer schools where children have been maskless and living normally? How long are you going to allow the parents and students in your district who have elected you to be pushed around by ever-changing and frankly, extremely conflicting data from health officials? Let the children breathe. Let them have a normal childhood. Stop the madness. Stand up against the mandates, the threats of fines, and stand up for your parents and students that want you to do the right thing. You do have a choice and you can do the right thing. Thank you.
Maria Barasa.
Hi, my name is Maria Barasa. I'm actually taking my mask off because the face emotes a lot, and I feel like people need to see that, just like our children. But this is something I saw this summer. I was signing my daughter up to have an introductory lesson to Taekwondo class. And when we went in there, you know, the owner of the place, he says, "For liability reasons and insurance, kids cannot wear masks on my mat because they are very active," right? And, and this one child, he, he couldn't bring himself to take his mask off. He was terrified of what it could do to him and what it could do to his family members if he took his mask off there. And so I am just, you know, I'm asking you to consider the, has been brought up multiple times, the mental health of our children. Seeing things like that made me really realize what our kids are going through in their tiny little heads, things that they shouldn't even have to think about. Being taught that, you know, they're going to make someone so sick, they're gonna kill them. It, I just feel like I had to bring this story to you. I didn't really have anything written. I just wanted to say that. You know, my kids would love the option. My daughter was supposed to start kindergarten last year, and I homeschooled her because she didn't want to have to wear a mask. She wanted to ride a bus, same thing, didn't want to have to wear a mask. And so this year they're going into, my daughter's going into first, and my son is going into kindergarten. And hopefully it can be something that we can push back on, you guys can push back on, and make it a choice, you know, for the students or the, the families.
Cole Zuber.
My name's Cole Zuber. I have two girls in the Hillsborough School District, one going into third and one going into sixth. We told them, based off of what we were told, that they wouldn't have to wear masks anymore. And now we're being told that they do have to wear masks. They're often taught in school that they have to show their work, right? How'd you get to this answer? Let's show your work and show the data. They're not being shown any data. We're not being shown any data that makes sense on this decision. It's just because I said so. I've never been one to parent because I said so. There's reasons behind it and logic behind it. And that's not being given to them. It's not being given to us. So I don't have a bunch of data points here today. I think you all have probably seen them. I would hope that if you're sitting in this room, you've seen them and looked at them. But at the end of the day, we need to teach our kids what's right. And teaching good values doesn't mean you just comply with something because somebody said so. Right? So I'm not gonna be sending my kids back to Hillsborough School or Enco Elementary to wear a mask because somebody said so. I teach them that they need to do what's right and what they believe in. And if they believe being mandated to wear a mask is wrong, I'm not gonna tell them to do so simply because y'all said so. So I just want you guys to hear us and listen to us and echo the transparency piece of Q and A and polls. Let's see in public, so everyone can see what the consensus really is of the public of who wants things mandated and who doesn't. The choice should be there for sure, but it shouldn't be mandated. And masks today, I don't even know why we're wearing these today. I didn't, I didn't realize it was a mandate. I mean, so, yeah, I don't know. That's all I had to say, but just wanted to be heard. Thanks.
And our final speaker is Helios Kelly.
Um, I am just going to start this off with something to say. Kate Brown, more like state clown. Also, this is what I what are we doing? Everyone, the government is controlling us. Do you know what the government wants? Power, control? That's all they kind of want. And most of us are just following along. And none of us really realize what is happening. It's like the government is pulling a cloth very slowly under us. Have you ever heard of the frog theory? It is about that there are some frogs and a person slowly did they, they put the frogs in a, in a pot. And those frogs are just like, yay! We just swim around in this pot. And then the, the person turns the fire on very slowly and, and people are just in there not realizing that they're just drowning in there. Not drowning, just getting cooked alive in there when other people that are awake are like, guys, I don't think this is okay. And they get out. And this, I don't think that everyone just sorry. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
That's all the comments we have signed up? Anybody else? One last chance? Want to make sure we have an opportunity from everybody who would like to speak. All right, thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item is the discussion of the return to fall agenda. I will, I will say pretty often, people speak and I don't hang around. So if you'd like to hang around and watch us do the work, awesome. But also, I understand most people don't. So if you want to go, nobody's gonna think you love you. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you. All right. Is it you?
I'll start. All right, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming today and for taking time out of your day to share your opinions. And I also want to acknowledge just how frustrating this is. And this, the start that we were talking about to the fall 21, 22 school year is not what any of us had in mind. We were in a spot where we were hoping we would have a more typical start, one that we've been used to prior to the last couple of years. And the only optimism that I can take from where we're currently at is that last summer, our entire goal was just to be able to meet in person. That was our entire goal. And we thought that was going to happen. We thought that was going to happen when we left at the end of the school year in June. We were making plans for that. We put our plans together. July, we started to get hints that that probably wasn't going to happen. And in early August, it was clear that that was not going to happen. Our next goal then, and we, we did not start the year in person. Our next goal then was, when we did return, let's make sure we can go all day, every day. And, and that was our goal at that time. And we ended up in a hybrid model where that was not the case. At this fall, as we've been planning for this fall, we have been saying over and over again, our goal is all day, every day. And, and we're up, and we can do that. We also have been at this point over the last several months where we've, things have been improving fairly rapidly. And then we thought, well, maybe we won't, we won't have to do the face covering thing. And we would have some opportunity there. But our goal all along, really for the last 500 days since this started, has been to get kids back all day, every day. Definitely disappointed that face coverings are back in play to the degree they are. But we do remain optimistic about getting kids back all day, every day. With that said, we have received some new guidance. We have received some new mandates. And today we're going to be sharing a district plan that does reflect those guidelines, that guidance and those mandates. As a reminder, the board doesn't vote on this. What happens is the board will provide input. And then we will take that input back and then we'll later share, at the end of this week, we will share a plan with the, with the community. Because that's the plan, is to share it at the end of this week. Before we share that plan, just a, a few more responses to some questions that we've been getting. So first of all, we get the question, why, why do kids need to wear masks? And so when when we rely, we rely on state and federal experts when it comes to medical. We are not conducting research out there. We are not conducting our own, or, you know, pulling our own data. We rely on the Oregon Health Authority, CDC, Washington County Public Health. And all of those organizations have indicated that wearing masks limits the spread. It'll limit the number of students as well that have to go into quarantine if there were an active case in the school. If we're able to limit the number of students that have to go into quarantine, then we are more likely to get to every student every day. We've been asked, does the governor actually have the power to, to put this mandate in place? And the answer is yes, with this state of emergency that is still currently in place. I mean, it is definitely within her scope of authority to do that. And because, and that's because of the impact on public health. She also has the authority to remove local control on various aspects of the guidance. And that's what's been done here. And we've been asked and encouraged, we've been encouraged by some people, don't comply. You don't need to do this. And so we've investigated, what happens if we don't comply? What would that actually mean for us? I, and we've been told on a variety of different things. First of all, as someone mentioned, the potential of a, of a fine, that is true. There's a potential for a $500 fine every day per violation. And we've been told that that per violation could include every student that wasn't complying with the, with the mandate. We've also been told that there is personal liability that could be in play, not only for the staff, but for the board members as well. OSBA, Oregon School Board Association, just sent out some information. OSBA, Oregon School Board Association just sent out some information last night to all its members. We've been told that there is TSPC, who is the licensing agent for all educators in the state of Oregon, that there would be an impact on license for those people that are not following the mandate. The other thing is there was legislation that was passed about a year ago now. And that legislation limited the liability that a school district could face if someone were to contract COVID within the schools. And the only way that liability is limited is by following the guidance in the mandates that are in place. If we don't follow those, then that, that liability is, is impacted. And I know it, you know, when I, when I sit up here and I say things like TSPC and liability and, you know, fines and that kind of thing, that doesn't sound like a good answer. And it's not all of the answer. But it does have to come into play when, when we're talking about public dollars. So again, I know it's very frustrating. We, we also are frustrated. We feel like we have a plan here that that is appropriate at this time. And we look forward to a time where there is not the number of restrictions that are currently in play. And at this time, I'd like to turn it to, I think Travis is going to kick us off here to go over the draft one.
We get your microphone? As first to Casey, to talk about some of the health and safety protocols of our operational plan, and then we'll provide a little more detail as we go through. Thanks Travis. Yes, specifically on bullet number one, when I'm talking about the operational plan, it's specific to how we're operating our buildings. So past school year, about how we operated our HVAC system. So we will continue with the process of bringing fresh outside air. Also providing air purifiers in areas where the airflow cannot meet the recommended guidance from the CDC. We'll also continue with our daily cleaning plan where we're cleaning our high touch point areas throughout the school day. Also throughout the evening on those high touch areas. The next big thing is staff training. So we, we do have a mandatory training for all our staff that will be required of them, which basically will go through all of our operating procedures. So every staff member is required to know how they need to operate within the building and has all kinds of variety of things, all the things that we're talking about here in this slide on what to do. Our communal disease management plan, this is something that we had to turn in and submit about a year and a half ago to the state in the original forest itself. So we've gone through that and updated anything that needs to be updated. And that will be in play as far as our communal disease management. That is a requirement of the updated operational plan from the state that we'll need to follow through with. That talks about things like what to do when there's a positive case, what, what are all of our actions for our staff to do, all of those types of things that some of us are pretty familiar with. The transportation plan, one of the things that the Oregon Department of Education sent out earlier this summer is the requirement that all students and staff on school buses will be required to wear masks. This is similar to public transportation in West, they look at school buses as the same. So that is separate from past discussion about in buildings and in school. This was actually put into place prior to the latest guidance we have. Breakfast and lunch, our goal is to have students eat in a traditional manner back into the cafeteria. Same with lunch. If you recall, your students, if they went back to school this past spring, a lot of them ate in the classrooms because of the, the large space. So we're going to do our best to provide the traditional breakfast and lunch and try to space out students as much as we possibly can and have them in, in the cafeteria. Distancing, the guidance recommendation is have distancing of three feet, but when applicable. So we're going to do our best to make sure that we're able to have some distancing, knowing that that won't always be the case. Specifically on school buses where there's going to be some kids closer together, classrooms to the extent possible, where we could get every kid in the classroom, we'll try to get the three feet. Same with the hallways and common areas. That also includes things like use of bathrooms and try to, just try to do the best job that we possibly can to maintain but knowing that not every case will be able to do that at all of our buildings. We've talked quite a bit about PPE, you know, us with the, the mask mandate and how that goes, we'll, we'll follow the tactics. But also we'll continue with certain barriers that we have in place, specifically at our, our main office, entryways. Some of our specialized programs will need that barrier for testing or interactions with students. So we'll continue to a lot of those operational things that we did this past school year. Continue with signage about hand washing and training the hand sanitizer for students. So we'll continue to frequently work with our staff to make sure that not only they, but their students are consistently hand washing as they transition maybe from a class to a class or from, you know, homeroom to lunch, those types of things. So that we can maintain the cleanest environment possible for our students. Those are some of the highlights for kind of how we plan to operate our buildings. Thanks Casey. And a shout out to Michelle Brady, who's been our emergency and safety manager and also Ray Lara for all the work that he's done with the in the sand hand sanitizer, et cetera. So thank you for that. Um, just to update the board on what the new requirements are coming from Department of Education. They notified us that we will have to resubmit an operational plan by August 23rd, along with other districts across the state, which is a streamlined version of the operational blueprint that we put together last year. They reminded us that it's legally required still based on CDC to wear masks on buses. So we need to have a plan to do that. And then we also need a recovery plan on paper for students with special needs in order to revamp our IEP process so that students, families and the IEP team can decide whether a student needs special support coming out of then the other guidance until the governor's order was recommendations from OHA and ODE. So the next couple of slides show a high level overview of places that are tough for us to meet the recommendations, but that we plan to just to get some conversation going. So as Casey mentioned, we'll try to maintain three feet within eating areas and expand seating options. So whether that's bringing in new tables or allowing students to eat outdoors in breezeway with hallways, we're going to try to supervise lunches so that students can spread out. That might take us investing in some more adults for supervision, but we can accomplish that. We will have, require masks when students are not eating or drinking. Cohorting of classes would allow us to keep students within close contact with just the same classmates at elementary school. At some schools where we allow students to intermingle across classes. That's one mitigation effort we can put into place. Thank you Dale. For elementary school cafeterias, for example. Physical distancing, as Casey referenced, we're going to update our signage from six feet to three feet. We do not plan to put new dots on the floor every three feet, like we put dots on the floor every six feet in many areas. I think students and staff have become accustomed to staying spaced out as they move around. We'll move classroom desks and remove furniture as necessary. And then we'll provide ongoing training for staff and students about how to stay physically distanced from each other in different spaces. We updated this last week per the governor's order. So we'll align with the guidance from OHA in Washington County as well as the governor's orders to wear masks in all indoor spaces for schools. That's regardless of vaccination status. We are, it did, in a conversation yesterday, we are required as a district to update our operational plan every six months. But ODE is telling us that at least monthly they'll review the guidance and come out with updates for us that allows us to change our plan. Mike already covered the limited liability issue. We will continue to follow the guidance. Hopefully maintain limited liability protection. And then some FAQs, these are responses to things that we've been answering via phone calls and emails. So how long will students and staff have to wear masks? The governor's order may lift based on new information. OHA is going to revisit the metrics and the orders at least monthly. OHA is the organization at the state level that influences the governor and has responsibility for maintaining safety in our state. And then district level operational plans will be reviewed each six months at a minimum. Who makes the decision to enact and lift COVID restrictions in schools? There's a national, state, local and district level for decision making. And so an example of the CDC's guidance is where nationally they can mandate that in transportation like buses and trains, people wear masks. The governor and ODE and OHA level is a state level. They have the authority based on laws in Oregon to declare emergency or to issue health mandates. And then Washington County is who we consult with in cases where there's an epidemic or where there's a public health safe, safety risk. An example of that was the norovirus outbreak a few years ago. A lot of us were in the room when the county was consulting us on whether or not to close one of our schools because so many students were sick with the norovirus. So they come in and immediately local level and have the jurisdiction to do so, the authority to do so. And then as a district, we respond to those three levels in operating our schools. What sports and, what about sports and activities? So yesterday's conversation with the Department of Education was that outdoor and indoor sports would be a matter of local control. What we're talking about is for indoor spaces, since we're talking about the same students and the same cohorts essentially in schools, we would extend the masks to indoor athletics. Outdoor athletics would be the same as recess or outdoor activities. There would be limits to masking in activities where things like strangulation are a risk. They mentioned wrestling and gymnastics where it would be hazard to students' health to wear a mask, for example. So there will be some exceptions within that plan for athletics. What happens if schools refuse to enforce masks? Mike touched on this a little bit, but OHA has the authority to find schools across the state. Schools can lose their limited liability protection when we go outside of guidance or laws governing health and safety in schools. Individuals with licenses like teachers and school administrators risk losing them when they knowingly defy a law in the state. And so those were things that were discussed with OSBA and ODE yesterday. TSPC is the governing body for state school licenses. So that would be a disciplinary action through TSPC. What happens if a parent, what happens if as a parent, I don't want my student to wear a mask? You can work with the low, the school to accommodate for a disability. For example, we have some students experiencing disabilities where we've provided Plexiglas between their desk and others. In that case, we've actually installed Plexiglas so that every student in the space has Plexiglas. So they're not singling out and putting in a Plexiglas box, just one student. So we're creating barriers to accommodate for disabilities. And then you can also enroll your student at Hillsborough Online Academy, which is a accredited school, K-12 in our district. We don't have Jordan here, so I'll just end there. Jordan was in an airport.
I'm, I'm here if you want me to go through them.
I can click for you, Jordan.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Jordan, we can
That was fleeting.
You can go to the next slide. All right. So in 2019, we'd planned our one-to-one rollout. And that included at the secondary, getting one-to-one devices from seven through 12, grade seven through 12. And we planned to roll those out in fall of 2020. Due to supply issues and other issues, those arrived in February of 2021. And so they, though we did start giving them out, they were not fully deployed at the middle and high school level. And so we also added on to try to support those and onsite tech at each middle school. Or one tech covers two middle schools. So it's two FTE to cover the four middle schools. And those were also posted as bilingual required positions because we had a lot of assistance needed in our, during the pandemic to assist with the online and call-in help desk for students and parents. We expanded the onsite techs at the high schools and made them part of the tech department. And those are now year-round positions because there are a lot of things that need done throughout the summer to get ready for the school year each year. At the elementary, we had a one-to-one and we planned to do one-to-one in grades three through six. And then in two-to-one in grades K two, K through two. And to roll out those devices in fall of 2022. And then add techs at the elementary schools to assist with all of the curriculum and additional devices in 2022. As long as some tech integration supports for K-12. Of course, those plans changed a bit over the last year. You can go to the next slide. So in 2021, our update of this is we are still rolling out the secondary devices and that'll be a full rollout now. We'll get all of those out to all middle and high school students. We expanded also the tech support at the middle school to include that being a year-round position for this next year. And then at the elementary, we made the change after this. We felt it was sort of going a step backwards in sticking with a two-to-one deployment at grades K two. So we upped that to a one-to-one deployment where every student would have the ability to get a device. And, and we also accelerated our purchase of those devices with the bond funds and some SIR funds. And so those were purchased and have been arriving these past weeks and started to show up at those elementary schools. So we also escalated that support that would be needed to support those devices and all the additional curriculum that we have added online and for classroom digital supports. And so those positions were also added this year and we're in the process of hiring those positions. So there's 10 positions that will cover the 25 elementary schools. And half of those positions we posted as bilingual required because we still need that support for all of our families. Then we also added that curriculum tech support with four TOSSAs that will be working with Alano on that curriculum tech integration. We added a, an awful lot of digital curriculum, both planned and due to the pandemic. But as we continue to use that technology, you know, I think we took like a five to seven-year leap forward in technology use. We don't want to lose that, but we also want to focus on making sure it's good use of technology and a high-level use of technology and not just used to, for the sake of using it. We also, perfect. Just some additional updates. Of course, we had the internet to families that we have been working on. Our plan over these next months will be to transition away from those hotspots that we gave out. Recollecting those and turning those off and getting more families switched over to Comcast Internet Essentials and the city fiber. And then we have some grants for additional hotspots that we wouldn't have to pay the cost for as we do right now with the Verizon hotspots. We've already secured some grants that would help us with those families that the hotspot is the only option. So we'll be making those transition of still supporting our families over the next years ahead with internet access if needed. As we have our one-to-one rollout, but we're going to try to get as many of them off hotspots as possible. We will continue our help desk for students and families. We're still trying to figure out how that will work with our additional texts and what the coverage looks like for answering those phone calls. We used to have nighttime support, which was great at different times during our teaching from home and learning from home, but the, it was not frequently used. At most times we would get maybe three calls a week at night when we were staffing that. So most likely it'll be mostly during the daytime to have some additional help or just barely just after school, not late into the night. And then again, we have the bilingual support on that call-in help desk. We also did some reconfiguring of our HOA teacher setups. Because they need a little different teacher configuration and devices to teach Hillsborough Online Academy than a traditional classroom teacher would need. And so we have gotten them a special setup that's different than our other classrooms. And then we also had a tech assigned to assist with HOA and special programs. Because there's lots of things that come up there and we needed a dedicated tech there to assist those programs. Just some other things. We do have a new wireless system that we're putting in. We have started that. That'll replace the wireless across the district with a faster new system. And so should have that finished by this fall. Like that is a bond-funded new system as well as a new phone system. And so we're, as we've installed a lot of this equipment for the classrooms and these devices, we're reviewing those replacement cycles to make sure we can replace them when it's needed. As I mentioned, we have the curriculum tech integration TOSSs that are gonna be working with Alano and with the tech department to help train in the digital curriculum and the tools we purchased. We've had to expand our, our tech team that assists with rostering and digital curriculum support with all of the different software and online tools that we are using because we like to roster those and make sure the kids' accounts are set up and classes are set up for teachers inside of them. And so we have expanded from about a three-quarter time position that was helping with other tech things to two full positions doing that rostering of digital curriculum support. And then we've also been going through and approving the resources. There was a, you know, a little bit of a mad scramble to try to find resources that teachers could use online and we wanted to make sure we were getting good resources and protecting our student data. When teachers and students use those things. So we were now to about 150 approved resources. And then we've reviewed about 50 that we said, no, there's some reason that we wouldn't want you to use this because of either data privacy issues or targeted advertising, which is against Oregon law. Next one. And then just a real quick piece along that note on cybersecurity and data protection. I can't go into a lot of the cybersecurity things in an open public meeting, but we are part of the Oregon Student Data Privacy Alliance, which does that software approval. We're all, there's 27 districts in Oregon that have banded together to have a standard contract. Then it's a national contract that many other states use, but it's specified to some specific Oregon laws. But that allows us to share and help each other of get those approved. And then if they have signed that contract with another district, we're able to work with, work with them based on that contract. And so we've been doing that for a little over a year now and I have about 80 different companies that have signed that contract with us. And so that's a big piece of us trying to protect our student data. And then there's been some changes to cybersecurity insurance with the number of districts that have been attacked over the last couple of years. And so you will notice and there'll be some other updates as you'll see through the year of a tightening of some cybersecurity rules and features that we will implement throughout the year. Just because of needing to maintain that insurance and also to again, continue to protect our student and staff data.
Thanks for remotely participating, Jordan.
We're at Q and A time. Colleagues.
Director Thomas.
Don't, okay. Do we understand what the protocol is and how? Should there be an outbreak of the virus in a cohort classroom? Do we understand how we would even know that? Do we know that right now?
Yes. Last year, we, in chime in cases. Last year, we developed a process where we would communicate, our nurses would communicate directly with Washington County. For a while, they were the contact tracers and then they turned responsibility over to school nurses to be the contact tracers. So we're in contact with families and students as they get positive COVID cases. And so from there, there are levels of quarantine. It could be an individual quarantine. There could be an individual quarantine where a student is asked to stay home. There could be a close contact quarantine where a student and those who were within close contact definitions during the school day, they could be asked to quarantine at home as well. And then there's a cohort quarantine where that could be a classroom. I'm imagining an elementary situation where there's a reason to believe that because two or more students in the cohort are, have COVID cases, that the county would be likely to ask us to ask that cohort to stay home for X number of days. And then there's a school level quarantine on up and that has to do with known cases. And then the type of contact that individuals in the cohort would have had with each other. And so we would, schools don't actually have the right technically to quarantine anyone. We have the right to exclude students for not meeting vaccination requirements or for being vomiting. We don't have the right to ask anyone to quarantine and that's what we rely on our partners at the county to tell us to do.
That, sorry, just to follow up on that, that when a close contact is mitigated by a mask, right? Like so if, if two students, unless you have multiple students in the same classroom testing positive. We have a student that tests positive, but his cohort was wearing masks. That means those kids probably are not considered close contact and don't have to go home, right?
Correct. Right now, today, three feet of distance plus a mask means that even if I was this close to Connor all day, since we were wearing masks, if I had symptoms and went home, she would not have to quarantine likely. If she had symptoms, the county might ask her to quarantine as well despite having worn a mask. So right now, close contact is without a mask, inside of six feet or with a mask within three feet.
So my follow-up question then is what happens to the teacher? When the cohort is shut down or the teacher is impacted?
Right now, we're having a discussion with our partners at HGA, Hillsborough Education Association, to talk about what the transition time is. If, if I'm an elementary teacher and my classroom, AKA my cohort gets quarantined, including me, we would put together a transition plan where we'd have a day or two for the teacher to transition to a CDL situation with those students. They would take their laptops home and we could get back into Google Meet. We're not getting rid of Google Classroom, so all of our assignments are lined up in there anyway. And we would try to transition as quickly as possible. So that's a subject of conversation right now as we get new guidelines. And we're thinking about that on an individual student level and a teacher level.
Thank you.
Director Lopez and then Director Allen.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I would like to just see as, as part of our plan is how do you shorten that transition period and try to mitigate interruptions into learning? When there might be a case for that quarantine disruption and figuring out, I think earlier in our conversation, we're talking about continuing either live casting or figuring out how we can still have students that might, you know, even if you have, I was thinking about this, even having a conversation about not just like COVID, but with now the new kind of culture around being sick and coming into a space or, or working. That maybe even if you have a regular code, you might not want to come into class, but yet, yet you don't want to miss out on some learning. So how can you mitigate those interruptions? So that's just something I wanted to figure out if we can have a plan to do that.
Thank you. No, those are, those are questions we're asking ourselves and we share the same value. Like we don't, we, for a long time have talked about what about a student who's at Dornbecker and would like to zoom into a classroom? Wouldn't it be nice if every kid had a laptop and we had cameras in our classrooms? We're not there yet, but we do want to make sure that students who have to miss school can still tune in using digital tools. And likewise with a, you know, quarantine of a cohort, how do we flip as quickly as possible into CDL?
And then my other question was just around our our insurance and liability issue. I think that that's something that is just complex to understand as well. And so trying to figure out, I know that sometimes some of the emails that I've read also were asking like, what if, what if people could just sign, sign the waiver and say it was okay? And, and would that limit our liability protection as well? Or how does that impact our insurance?
We have asked that question and it does not. If they were to sign a waiver, that does not excuse our liability in a situation.
And sort of speaking from the legislative perspective, they, they sort of, as they were discussing that limited liability, they wanted to ensure to some degree that a potential bad actor couldn't be protected just because some parent signed a piece of paper. Director Allen?
Okay, three things. Um, the first is, I think that the one-to-one is so I'm, I'm on board with that and I'm very excited. A couple of things, comments otherwise in the plan. It said that the district will revisit this plan every six months minimum. But given that a school year is nine months in length, that seems like it's just too many months. And so I would suggest that maybe we say four days, the minimum. And then the last thing is around sports and activities and the mask requirement for indoor sports. It said that as of yesterday, according to the Oregon Department of Education, there's local control on that. And so my question is, if we did say, hey, you know what? There are two basketball teams in gym that's four times the size of a classroom. We have maybe 20 kids in here. We're not going to require masks. We have fewer kids than we have in a classroom, much larger size and not for an entire day. Is that a liability issue or could you do that? Because I don't think it seems sort of cumbersome in a way that's, I'll use the same word, unrealistic to continue to require masks for like basketball players. And we don't really have to. So I would like to see us the one thing we do have to go.
Just wanted to give a little more info on that piece and you're correct. The issue of sports and activities that take place outside of the normal school day is up to local control. And the distinction that was being made is that going to school during the course of a normal school day is compulsory. Kids don't have a choice whether or not to attend school. Whereas sports and activities are voluntary, which is why they feel like they can make that distinction. So things that are happening outside the school day that are voluntary are areas where a district can still exert some local control. So I just wanted, just thought I would add that piece. So it is, it is up to us how we treat the indoor sports and activities. So that would be certainly a matter where we would appreciate your, your input and discussion.
Does the OSAA expect the sports calendar to be somewhat normalized?
They do. Yeah. And I don't think we're going to get new information from OSAA regarding weighing in on the point that Lisa just brought up. I think it will continue to be local control. And I think it'll be district, it'll be different district from district. And you know, so you hear on one hand, it's the same kids are transitioning from math to the volleyball court. Why would we have them masked? And they're still, even though the gym is large, they're still within three feet of each other. Why would we do that? And then you hear the other piece that that just brought up is that it is optional. So we, we would love to hear the board's input.
Are we, are we expecting spectators to be allowed? Is it just would be roughly 12, 15, like how many kids on the basketball team? So is it just the two basketball teams and maybe a couple of coaches or is it 100 people in the stands?
Participants in the event being on one thing and potentially the spectator being another thing. Now, we currently go, go with the spectators with whatever the state is requiring based on numbers. Now, or 50%, we continue to watch that. So whatever that is, we traditionally follow the spectator. And then the decision will have to be made unless the state does. What's the masking requirement for visitors at sporting events or outdoor venues? There's a schedule of event type of things that have, have had mask requirements, capacity requirements, those kinds of things.
What indoor sports begin they want?
Volleyball.
And Lisa, to your second point, I appreciate your input. The six-month cycle of re-upping the operational plan is prescribed in the RSSL guidance. And actually they have dates that the plan is due every August and February for the next three years, which kind of like was depressing to look at. And I hope that that cycle ends. But we, we respond to new guidance as it comes out. So foreseeably, if ODE updates the guidance every month or if they even shorten it to every week, then we would respond accordingly. So I appreciate that input. I think we'll make tweaks way in between the six-month guideposts.
More follow-up, please, so you could.
Thank you. I think we should still continue to discuss the indoor sports mask requirement. I still stand by what I said and that's what I think that we should do.
Do we want to do that now or continue with the board questions and set aside time for that? What do people want to do? Anybody want to share their thoughts on whether or not athletes on the court, on the volleyball court or basketball court should be masked?
I think, I think that prior to our mandate, we had a really great like agreement with all of us in our school district and operations and going into it. And I think being able to exercise what we can during our, the options of, of local control and making sure that our insurance liability is still okay and not impacted by that. I think that for us, we should definitely encourage and highly encourage people. And if they feel comfortable, but I also think that if they don't want to wear a mask for indoor sports, that they shouldn't have to. So.
Anybody else want to share your thoughts with the administrative team?
I'm not comfortable with the idea that, the idea that we're putting forth is that, or that the state has given us is that if you volunteer, I want to play basketball, it's okay for me to say, I don't want to wear a mask. But if they're coming to school every day, they have to wear a mask. That's a problem. And that's where we are. So the question then becomes the, the, the sport association for the state is not going to require basketball, volleyball to wear a mask. They're probably not going to invite, they're not going to require any running to do that. Football wasn't required. They did make lacrosse do it for a little while, believe it or not. So I, I want to make sure that we're consistent. It's bad enough that we have to, that we've taken away the choice. Or we, that we don't have a choice with regard to the mask, which is where we were headed. And now you're telling me, okay, no, but the sports are okay. This feels a little not equitable. Even though I understand, trust me, I understand about the liability part of it. What I did not know was that we could potentially negatively impact our accreditation of the grants that we have. That was key. I did not know that. And call it well crafted. I understand that. But I think we need, I, to Lisa's point, I think we need to talk about that a little bit more. Um, especially if we have the power to control something differently.
I think the student said something they wanted to add.
Wait, is that? Okay. So, um, I think, I know, and I understand that it's hard to, you know, exercise and work out because I, I do it like, um, as a cheerleader, I'm in our cheer room and I'm working out and I'm exercising and we're doing lots of work, but we also go outside when we're going to do conditioning so that we can't take our masks off. So I think, um, telling them, oh, if you don't want to, you don't have to. It's kind of like, um, going back in our word that they have to wear. And there is outdoors, you can still go outside. Your coach has a key to go back into the building. And there's plenty of space outside on campus. Um, and especially, you know, for Hill High, our campus is an outdoor campus. So if you want to go right next to the gym, there's a lot of space right next to the gym where you guys can work out and do your exercises that you need to, and then go back inside and it'd be fine.
All right, I'm going to do my best to talk right into here. Um, I want to add on to this. I know that I've been doing fencing for the duration of the pandemic with a mask and it's kind of a pain to have to wear a mask for sports. I definitely agree. It can be frustrating. But I also feel like we need to consider student buy-in, especially in the upper grades and in the high school. I know that in Glencoe I can vouch for, we've had a lot of problem with student adaptation to the policy of wearing lanyards. I know that that's something we have resistance to. And my worry is that if we make it seem like there's this secondary standard for sports, no matter how well reasoned it might be or how it feels within the path, or how it fits within liabilities. If you're looking at it from a student perspective, there is this element of it makes the mandate for masks within the normal school day feel like it doesn't make sense. When I think that in an ideal universe where it was easy to explain 100% of the science to everybody, it would make sense to maybe have some different differentiation between different conditions because they do have a different impact on our liability, on how likely someone is to get sick, on how likely someone is to spread the disease if they are sick. I think for the terms of having student buy-in and having it feel fair for everybody all the time, that we should continue to enforce our policy the same outside of the school day as it is during the school day. I think that's just what makes the most sense in terms of helping keep things straight in people's heads.
Do you want anything, Michelle or Beth, Kaylee?
Slightly unrelated, but kind of related. Um, I was just going to ask like for extracurriculars before and after school that are non-sports related, would masks be required?
Yeah, as of yesterday, that was the stance that they said that during the school day, masks required before and after school activities and athletics, um, local decision.
And we haven't been requiring masks for band?
We have not. We did order PPE for band. One of the things that they said yesterday is that while playing an instrument with one's mouth, one is not required to wear a mask. So we're prepared to provide the PPE if a student were to want to wear a mask while playing an oboe, we have that. And if they don't, then they don't have to, just like when they're eating or drinking or technically sleeping. So nap time, mealtime, drinking and playing an instrument with your mouth are the four times that I don't have to wear a mask when I'm in school.
I had another question that was like, if there's like a, is this like this, the class, like just to clarify, like if, like say like an elementary setting, they were to go outside, would masks be required?
Negative. Uh, masks aren't required outdoors for activities.
Um, and I know we were talking about volleyball and basketball. If you really wanted to take your mask off and if it was really an issue, there's basketball courts outside, um, or at least that Hill High there is outside. So you can go ahead and play outside too. And if volleyball is an issue too, we can set up a net outside like they do in the gyms anyway. So I feel like there's ways we can work around it and not necessarily be like, oh, oh, if you choose to take your mask off indoors, then do it. But like, I feel like we have to stick to our word and be like, if you're inside and you're close to people, wear your mask. And if you want to play outside to take your mask off and be more comfortable, then, you know, that's up to the coach and that's up to the team to decide that that's what you guys want to do and that's what you guys are going to do. So you guys can all take your masks off.
Anything anybody wants to add on this topic before we move on? Is that? Oh, I think sheen was up next for like when we switched topics, I think, yeah.
But my question was answered.
Gotcha. Okay. Uh, I would, I would add sort of my thought. Priority being, you know, risk and liability, like, you know, if, if we, I, if they're saying we have local control, I can't imagine that it puts us in a vulnerable legal position. I don't, I don't think that they would do that, but it's possible. And so my, my, I guess my preference would be limiting the number of spectators as much as reasonable or whatever the requirement is. My preference would be, um, you know, requiring spectators to wear masks as the Oregon Health Authority and CDC says anybody inside should be wearing a mask. But I, I can't imagine asking a basketball player or volleyball player to wear a mask. It just doesn't seem, and, and best comment about compulsory versus voluntary kind of has a bunch of weight with me. Like you, you can choose not to go to the grocery store. You can't choose not to go to school yet. We compel you to go to school. So. Um, just so it, it, what I, I guess, but wide range of opinions amongst the board. So, um, I don't know how you, how it helps you craft a policy for athletics and activities. Um, but it gives you an idea and I think we'd all love to get some follow-up on, you know, what, what would be our legal exposure? Should we choose to go with athletes and activities being unmasked outside of school hours?
Mark? Did you notice that you can clean?
Oh, I, on this thing. Okay, sure. I thought that was for next. Yeah, cool.
I just want to chime in on the whole athletic idea with the masks. And I believe during the presentation, it was mentioned that there would be no masks because of safety considerations with wrestling and things like gymnastics and such. And I feel the same is true when you're exerting yourself in basketball or volleyball or any of those other type of sports. But those kids should not have to be wearing a mask and have that level of exertion as well. And I understand the student reps points about being able to do some things outside. This is Oregon. I know some people are webbed, but the weather does change and that would be a consideration to think about as well.
Yeah, I would encourage coaches to, to conduct as much training as they can outside.
Yeah. I think, I think this also has to do with the association. So let's remember that when in high school sports, um, you're a part of an association and that schedule is set and they make rules for the entire state. So that is the rule that is going on throughout the state. So the question then becomes what happens when we go to one school to another school? And that's where the, uh, the consistency has to be established. I agree that I don't want basketball players and volleyball players to have to wear a mask. But because we have to do the pivot and shift on everybody else, that's what, that's what makes me pause. And I, I recognize and I know what it's like. I made it to NCAA Division One track and field. I know what it's like to stand up and say, I'll kill myself out on the track. So I get that part and I understand liability from a legal standpoint. But that is the reason why I'm having this conversation because we're in a different world. But again, I think that if it would help us, or I hope it would help us all to understand what the association, the Athletic Association's rules are going to be statewide, um, so that we understand how everybody is going to handle it.
Right. Like it would be interesting if we did not require masks in our basketball team and away game at sunset was required to.
So that, that's one of the things I put on my list to check out is, I don't think OSA is going to do anything other than say, if ODE says that portion of school is local control, then they're, they're going to go with that. What I do wonder is what other teams in the league? And so we will, we will.
That'd be good information. Yeah. And I would suggest sort of weighing, you know, the, we're in the middle of a pandemic. There's no awesome answer. Uh, I am extremely worried about refilling the pipelines for those activities, sports, band, drama. Students who expected to be participating in those activities have had seasons erased. And, um, yeah, I worry that we, all the data, 85% more likely to graduate on time. If you're involved in an extracurricular activity, be it sports or drama or band. So refilling those pipelines is critically important. So doing things that create another hindrance for a kid to participate makes me a little bit nervous as well. Casey?
Marcus wanted, I was just doing a little bit of quick research here. And, um, your Weber, who's the executive director of the OSAA stated, um, just as recently as July 30th, that the OSA is working with ODE and the governor's office to get clarification on the indoor mask guidance. So, you know, I, I
This may not be a choice we get to make in yet.
Well, I didn't, I didn't find anything specific one way or another. It just, uh, we can follow, I think we need to follow up with the governing with OSA and see, is there going to be anything coming out? You know, Mike would have the most up to date information, but it sounds like this is recent as the 30th, it was just a couple of days ago. They were looking for some clarification to see if the K-12 school day followed in line with indoor athletic activities, etc. So there may be more than we know that's coming out. Just don't have the information yet.
Guessing we have a lot of other questions, unrelated activities and athletics. Are we wrapped up on this or do we want, okay?
Um, I just ask that no matter what our final outcome ends up being in regards to indoor mask guidance that we craft a simple explanation for both students and families and coaches as to why that decision was made. If masks are optional, why it's a different circumstance and why it's still important in the building. And to just make a very clear and transparent, the evidence and science like people have been asking for today behind the decision that we made and try and make sure that's accessible to people and well explained. Because I think people are more likely to comply with the guidance if they understand the reasoning behind it and if we can show why we think it's important.
All right. Moving on to all of the other questions we have regarding return to school in the fall. Director Lopez.
Oh, I was, um, trying to chime in behind that. I appreciate Kaylee's point. At Hill High, and that is probably our only high school that was built more. Our other schools don't. Um, but I do think that whatever decision we make for after school activities that it's consistent across so that there's no really, um, like differentiator is just like, this is, this is the, the guidance that the school district is putting forth and that it's consistent for everyone. I think your point about being compulsory versus optional and, and why we have that, I think, as make sure that we're communicating why we're able to make decisions on some things or be able to provide that guidance as we versus the other things that we cannot. I think figuring out a way of getting that message out to our community so that they're aware and prepared because it might also change, um, some community members, maybe decisions to participate in activities depending on our guidance. So I think it's important that we get that as soon as we can.
Athletics or something else? Okay. Thank you, Director Allen, for such a, for initiating such a robust conversation. Thank you for everybody for participating. And for all of you that who stayed, this is how government's supposed to work. We should make our decisions in the view of the public and you should understand why we decide that. Um, all right, Director Thomas.
Um, my question is regards to the mask enforcement, uh, the mask rule enforcement that we now have. How are we going to enforce this? And do we have a plan for refusal?
Yes, we're going to be working with our administrative team on Thursday and we're going to be talking through what happens when someone says, I prefer not to wear a mask. And we'll be supplying the stations in front of the schools with hand sanitizer and surgical mask like we have been. So Casey covered that we're going to continue with all the safety protocols and the availability of PPE. And basically it comes down to what are my options if I'm a parent and I don't want my student to wear a mask? I can either give them a mask or, um, we have plans to allow students to stay in a safe place in the office while their parents come to pick them up. They could access HOA or another homeschool opportunity. But we won't be able to allow a student without a disability and a special plan to attend school without a mask.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jesus.
Are these still sufficient on lessons? Like if that, I know we have the mask requirement, but are we still doing that? And, and are, do we need to stagger start times for tools to accommodate for that? You know, have the bus shortage because of how many kids we have to transport. Is that still going to go on into next year?
One of the unique challenges we have with our transportation system is the fact that we need to, in order to have full-time in-person instruction that we've committed to getting kids to school in a manner similar to what we did pre-pandemic is a necessity. So while we won't be able to maintain the three feet of distancing on most bus routes, I mean, some will have fewer students, but really a lot of them will have, uh, be closer than the three feet. I think that's part of the reason why at the national level, the face mask covering and some of the open ventilation that will be required. So, you know, that's one of those things that in an optimal world, we would be able to have the distancing. We won't be able to do that in order to, uh, bring back kids full-time. So, and we're not able to change the schedule in such, as such to make it work. So, um, that's, um, where we are with transferring students in the fall.
So, uh, just to summarize, we, we are not reducing the capacity of our transportation system anymore.
No.
But they will have to wear masks.
They will have to wear masks. We'll maintain the window ventilation, those types of things. That's, that's our only way to get to, uh, full-time, everyday instruction.
And, and that's what we've heard. That's a CDC national mandate. The buses are the same as a TriMet bus.
Correct.
A airplane, whatever. It's the, the nationally mandated, when you're using public modes of transportation, you have to wear masks.
Correct. Okay.
Director Kim?
So with the mask mandate, what I'm understanding is especially for the younger learners, masks can be taken off when they are at recess and during the time that they're eating. Are those the only two times that they are allowed to take the mask off? And if those are the only two times that is currently allowed, are there ways to build in some natural breaks, especially for our younger learners, uh, to be able to take their mask off safely and kind of build that out throughout the day so that the duration of time that some of our younger learners are required to wear a mask is shortened in, in given day.
Yeah, thank you. Great question. Um, we, last year we had planned mask breaks. So those could be outdoor mask breaks. We can also do instruction outdoors. So if I'm a teacher, I'm taking my class outdoors to do morning meeting circle time. So that, I think the, um, the availability of nice weather this fall is going to be a great gift to students and teachers as they transition back because outdoors, we don't have to wear masks. They would still be optional and the student can wear a mask anytime they want. But no, eating in recess is not the only time that I could take off a mask if I'm a student. We're trying to plan as many breaks into the day as we can.
And then a follow-up question is, I know that the operational plan is something we'll be revisiting every six months. But in the case that the governor chooses to lift the mask mandate, is that something that we could implement immediately? Like the next day?
Yes.
Director Lopez?
I did have a follow-up now that you mentioned that. I know that we had said that if there was, um, uh, you know, a kid that we have that maybe had a disability or need not to wear a mask, that we could do like flexi-glass and we would actually do it for the whole class so that they're not singled out. How expensive is that for us to do? Like if we're thinking about just the younger learners? I know, I just wanted to, one, check what would be our budgetary impact to do that. I know that if things were to change in like three weeks or a month, it might not make sense to invest that money. But I think I would just want to know how much that, how expensive that is.
Thank you.
But one of the things that we've been fortunate of, um, specifically over the last is at the state level. is at the state level, um, they have been um, doling out masks and P P E for school districts. So we will get every couple of months, let's say from the E S D will say, okay, here's Hillsborough's allotment. We need to come pick them up. So we've been stockpiling masks and, and we have several hundred thousand of them um, that have not been um, a cost uh problem for us. We did buy a bunch initially and we still are going through those. So we feel confident about the P P E that we have on hand and expect to get more as needed.
But like for the, the Plexiglas, how like do we have that to put in? I think one of the things that we're just talking about and um, especially for our, just our early learners who are um, trying to, and our English language learners who are trying to do that. Can, can we do that? Is it too expensive to do that? Do we have the materials in place?
Again, we, we have it for certain situations and certainly, you know, not, not, not it's not necessarily uh initially a cost barrier for that. We have done it where, where it's needed, but not in every circumstance.
To sort of reinforce and follow up on Director Kim's question. So I, you know, as, as bleak as some people may find the current situation, it, we're clearly in a better spot than we were before. We're talking about all day, every day, and that was not an option before. With that improvement, it sounds like, and I just want to verify, it comes some flexibility that we didn't have before. So we had a four week plan where we would transition young learners back. And so if, you know, the, just as, as recently as two weeks ago, we were discussing the possibility of, you know, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, right? Oh my, I just lost the whole thing. I got it. Never mind. First day, first day on the gym, uh, right? So we were just as little as two, so things changed dramatically, pretty quickly. Maybe things can change dramatically, pretty quickly the other way. Wha- what kind of time constraints, what kind of flex, how flexible can we be? If things suddenly improve, how quickly could we get back to? If you're vaccinated enough to wear a mask and we're not going to check your vaccination status, you tell me you're vaccinated, good by me.
So that's one of the things that we wanted to talk about. It's a follow up discussion here is, let's say that happened. Um, what is the process that you would like us to use to make that decision?
I'm supposed to go last, so somebody want to weigh in first?
I would think that we would have to allow the parent to make a choice. We have to have some vehicle for the parent to articulate that choice. Whether it's email form, call the school, whatever, whichever form of articulation is the most efficient and has the less negative impact on staff and administration would be the most efficient and the quickest way to get that done. We should make it easy for a parent to say whatever that decision is and move.
Director Allen.
Okay. Uh, so I think your question is if the guidance from, or the requirements from the governor change, what do we want to see happen? What's the, the process that we'd like to set? Um, yeah, I think if, if, if things, if that happens, things are obviously moving in the right direction, right? We know that's going to be the case. Um, and I, I believe that the best case scenario for us would be to if it's still, you know, strongly recommended that folks wear masks, then we strongly recommend it. Um, and if it's not required, that folks in schools will access, then we shouldn't require it. We should implement that as soon as possible.
Yeah, I
But
I guess just to piggyback on that, I don't, I think it's a very heavily operational thing to try to figure out the logistics and to get each one of our opinions on like how that should be done. I think that you kind of already got our, our feel for when we were planning originally. And so what we wanted to do is that, you know, follow those, those recommendations of highly recommended and make sure that we're providing that um option. But I think that it, I'm comfortable with, as soon as things change with Mike already knowing our, our positions and being able to execute. I don't think we should have like a special work session or
Like you want to talk? I don't have a mic. Go for it.
Um, so one of the things that we've discussed, I mean, just as late as a week ago, was the whole notion of at the secondary level, we could make that optional because students have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. Doesn't mean they can't wear masks, but it would be optional. But at the elementary level, they have not had that opportunity. And face mask would still be required. And that was a pretty popular discussion that was happening across the state at that time. Be interested in your thoughts on that.
So you want us to just comment on?
Yeah, just what are your thoughts on that plan? If things were to change, back to how they were ten days ago, whenever this happened?
Yeah, I'm, I, I support for the, for the students that can be vaccinated. But for the children that have not had that opportunity yet, still requiring masks.
Director Allen.
At least that's what I, um, my thoughts. And then I have kind of a follow up question um, from what Erica said about if it's recommended because before our liability also required us to, to follow those recommendations or else we're outside of it. So I guess let's look at that too, when it's recommended. Like, so like, let's say that it's recommended that students still wear masks and then we're like, well, you don't have to, what's our liability? If we decide not to go with the recommendation.
And that was a concern with, when we checked it with our, we've got some legal things on that, that was a concern even at the secondary level. So I think to be the most safe, you would need the guidelines, the guidance to change and the recommendations to change. To just flat out optional as opposed to strongly encouraged.
Director Allen and Director Lopez.
So I, I don't think that at this point in, in the pandemic experience, it's, it's reasonable or wise to go beyond what is required by the state. But the state says that it is strongly encouraged K twelve, but not required. That is absolutely what we should implement, period. We know that K six students are not the ones walking around making everybody sick. They're also not the ones who are dying and we were previously hardcore about masking, social distancing at that age in order to protect the most vulnerable in our community, which is a critical and important. But at this point, those folks have had ample opportunity to protect themselves and get fully vaccinated. This is why we can't have nice things, right? Go get vaccinated. But my eight year old doesn't need to suffer because someone won't go to the doctor and get a shot.
So the, the liability question, just on, on, just on that front is that it'd be, if the state, this is a legal opinion that we got that. If the state is saying strongly recommended or is that, is that the right word? It's a stronger, strongly recommended. Then if we are not, they're strongly recommending that to us. And if we don't turn around and say, um, you need to wear masks, then our liability is not going to be limited in the way so that's part of the equation. Cause we initially thought, hey, if they're saying strongly recommend, if we turn around and say strongly recommend and just kind of let it flow, then we, then our liability would be protected. And that is not the case.
Right. And the, the guideline that we got from what? When the C D C said, you should, uh, before things got worse, right? The C D C was saying, we understand that not every community in the country is the same. Use a local lens. Our most local lens is Washington County Health. And they said, if you're not vaccinated, you should wear a mask when you go inside. That was two weeks ago and things were great. Right? So when, when they recommend, if you're not vaccinated, you should wear a mask when you go inside and we don't do that. That puts us in legal jeopardy and that's sort of, the legislature designed it that way again to prevent bad actors from using it. A guideline. So it was just a guideline, wasn't a rule. So uh, you're still illuminated. Do I keep going? So should I go there? Okay. Uh, Director Lopez and then the students have a comment.
Yeah, I would say whatever doesn't, whatever um allows us to not be in liability jeopardy, I'm fine with that. So if we're able to pass, pass through and say uh, highly required or highly, you know, um, recommended and that still keeps our liability um in place and protections in place, then I think that I'm fine with that at any age level um and vaccination status. It's, it's really whatever doesn't jeopardize that. For me, that's the most important thing.
Students, I'm not sure which one, but fire away.
I was like thinking about whether or not to speak on this, but um, like first off, like I think my views on this are a little bit different from some like the popular consensus. And I, I like, I agree that like if we can, it would be better to not have masks like whenever possible. Because I think I understand like the viewpoint of like mental health and such like that. And the importance of no facial recognition and emotional connection. I really do understand that. Um, by S S C, like there are some people who are concerned with, for example, like the Delta variant that's going around. And that is the reason why like um, like like we're still figuring out how long these vaccines are effective and how long, like, what? Like how long we still need to like stay masked up and seeing how everything goes out. So I guess I'm just saying like right now, we could say that, but like, I think it's like, once the time comes, we'll know more because we'll have more data and have more research about like, you know, like, and more guidance from the C D C and from like Oregon about what to do.
Yeah, let me just insert uh something right there for that, with that. So I, I think that's what Mike was kind of getting at with his question is operation. So we've decided that the board, operational plans are not something the board votes on, which makes complete sense to me. And that this is an operational plan. What, what I think I'm hearing from Mike is that um, much like this, they, they prefer to make the operational decision with some input from the board as opposed to in a vacuum. Just look, so uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I think Mike is saying is, should the situation change? How would the board like to give input before an operational plan is created? I don't think we've covered that yet. But Seth, what do you got?
Um, I was just going to say, if we're anticipating that, um, if I'm remembering all of my acronyms correctly, O H A is going to have differing guidance like updated each month and we expect to hear back on that periodically. Do we think it makes sense, given how many questions we still have about exactly how all this is playing out to go a little bit into the school year, I'm assuming maybe wrongly, but that the mask mandate is unlikely to change and maybe the first month of school or so and have an opportunity to see what's happening inside the school building and maybe receive a brief update from or in, from different members of the blanking here, but like council, um, or different members of admin on how things are going, the implementation, what we're seeing in terms of that and how the plan has been rolled out to then be able to make our decision or to give advice on how we'd like to see it updated in the future. Now, since we have some experience under our belt and we aren't working in a vacuum.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's the right route to go as well. We are, we can guess what the conditions are going to be like a month from now or six weeks from now. And we will get some of that guess right and we'll get some of it totally wrong. So I think um, when things start to, when, before things change, we'll start to see a trend and we'll start to hear rumors about it. And when that occurs, we can either have a meeting or we can gather information in differently. So, and, and we will have additional information at that time. That seems to make the most sense.
I, I think that um, if if there is a need to change the operational plan, you have enough experience and you have enough information to create a framework or draft. And we have a communication plan among us all to talk about what that is so that we could potentially see it. Um, we have done, you guys have done a phenomenal job in keeping us apprised as things change. Nothing changes. Let's keep doing that. And let's hope and pray that we get this thing will turn around and that we can do that. And then we get the text from you that says, hey, we think we can change the operational plan. We think we can make it, we can change and pivot. And that's what I, that's what I'm hoping to do. I'm hoping that we follow the same things that we have right now. And then we can pivot when needed, when we can ASAP so that people can, can have their choice. And the last thing I want to say is that while I appreciate everything I heard today, what I didn't hear were the other people that I've heard from that have sent me emails that say, thank you for requiring a mask. I know it's hard to understand, but everybody doesn't agree with no masking for children. So I just want to say that for people who don't agree with that, there, there's another side to the story. And it just takes one child to be sick and we pray that it's none of our children. But it takes one child and one family to change the course of all of this. It's just something that we shouldn't forget.
I call on you, Director Lopez, but my board says your time's at zero. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to say that I'm, I think we established earlier in our, in our work session or retreat about our communication within the board and getting updates. And I know that um, this time around, I feel like I didn't even hear a rumor. It just flipped like a light switch. So I am, uh, I'm comfortable with, um, you know, you getting us an update, communicating if things are changing or if things were to change, that you, this is what the liability issue as it stands, here's where we can, um, you know, have these. And I think it's also, um, I think when we're highly recommended and making sure that our families that um, feel more comfortable to make sure that they are always, we continue to keep our P P E and everything available for families and students that choose to uh, wear masks. Um, and so I just, I, I think in looking for the answer of like, how do we proceed? I'm fine with as things change that you communicate to us, here's where it's changing, here's our liability issue. And then here's where we're moving in.
Yeah, I feel, I feel like those uh, the communication plans we discussed upstairs work for this. And sometimes we have those legally compliant, small group meetings. We, those I think are fine. Like I'm head nods or whatever. I think I'm pretty fine with those. Like as, as things change, those small group discussions are a good format for us to do it. And now that we know we can use the virtual world to do it, it's even easier, right? So um, I'm sort of okay with that. Erica, you're illuminated again. You want to go?
No.
Sorry. Any other questions regarding the return to school plan? And I have a couple. Cause I have to go last. Uh, easy one. Uh, with distancing being less of a priority when people are masked up, do we anticipate hallways continuing to be a one way flow like we heard earlier today? Having to go all the way around the corner and be late for a class to go to our senior left?
I'll think of shot. I, I, I think we're still trying to navigate through some of those details between now and submit our operational plan. There's a way to manage that. That's one of the areas where we can manage the distance to the free distance. So I'm not sure that I can answer that.
Sure.
My perspective right now, I don't know if Travis or anybody else cited that. I'm not sure.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is if we're wearing masks and we're not within proximity each other up to fifteen minutes, then the, the safety requirements or the health recommendations would be that if in passing in a hall, we're not going to
Yeah, passing period is not fifteen minutes.
So I think that'll give us some freedom and we'll have to have freedom to bring every student back every day, all day. So we're going to have
Yeah, and, and I really believe one of the big priorities is all day, every day. So I mean, if, if, if it no longer makes sense to be one way in the hallway, I think we can change that. My, my personal thought. Uh, none of us are legal experts, uh, but a couple of times we've mentioned the governor's authority related to the state of emergency. So I'm pretty sure that that's for how long the governor has this authority. And based on the legal opinion, is it your understanding? And based on the legal opinion, is it your understanding based on legal opinion we got that that ends December thirty first? Unless it's extended, but right now the state of emergency ends December thirty first, right?
I do not have the end date. What I have is a legal opinion stating that it's currently in place. And that the authority currently exists.
Right. The, and we, we had, I had thought. State emergency ended June thirtieth when we opened up, but that was not actually the case. The legal authority. Uh, correct me, but I think you said through the end of the year was the terminology. So in that sense. The governor's authority should only extend during the period of the state of emergency, which unless it's extended again, is the end of the year. But, but I never really got an answer to the, to the previous question. We are in a position to be much more flexible as information change. We don't need a four-week transition plan. That's what I'm saying, right? Like if, if things improve, we should be able to react fairly quickly to that improvement if we have, you know, Washington County Health saying. Yeah, this is what makes sense now.
Yeah, there's nothing in the new RSSL guidance, the Ready School Safe Learners Resiliency Framework. It's what it's called. It says that we should add back students incrementally, like the last plan said. That's when we were going from CDL to hybrid or in-person. Today, what we're being told is bring students back all day, every day and wear a mask. And so that we wouldn't, there's no incrementalness about taking the mask off when we get that directive. So I like the plan that I'm hearing, which is we would come up with how to operationalize, take off your mask if you're a secondary student and you're vaccinated.
Yeah, well, it makes sense with the guidance and you'd bring it to us. We'd have small group discussions if we don't have a board meeting schedule. That's an operational plan.
That's different than bringing twenty, twenty thousand students back in a single day.
Right.
What they were trying to tell us was bring back students at elementary and see how it goes.
Right.
And, and so that's a, that was a different context.
Director Martinez.
All right, I, I had a question. All right. So for the littles, we reduced class sizes. Are we keeping those sizes or we're going to have to add more kiddos like?
No, we, we returned to our regular class sizes. Our PE music staff returned back to the classroom. So we could have that more balanced education for them. And but the ratio is different. Is it twenty-six to one? Or can you, twenty-six to one and then twenty-eight to one? Okay. Yeah, for first and second grade. So just to accommodate our little friends who haven't been in school.
All right. Anybody else or should we move to discussion time? Like we haven't discussed enough earlier.
I thought we were in discussion.
No, this isn't discuss. This was, this was, this was our last agenda item, not our second or last agenda. All right, we'll begin with the students. Uh, it feels weird that I call on everybody else, but I don't. So I will let you guys decide. Who wants to go first, but we should discuss a plan for that. So it's. Yeah. What's that?
Say what discussion time is?
Oh, sorry. I, I think we covered it in their orientation, but yes, discussion time is when you get to say whatever you'd like to say. Maybe updates from your school, personal life, whatever you'd like.
All right. I'd just like to say thank you to everybody who showed up today, especially to the people who stayed throughout the meeting to share your opinion with our board. It was incredibly valuable to have my first experience going to a full, real in-person board meeting. Be full of lively feedback from the community and I'm really glad for the opportunity to hear from everybody. Regardless of viewpoint or experience, I was very impressed that we had people from across the school levels. In addition to just parents show up to give their feedback, I'm a big fan of student voice and it was incredible to have students show up. At a school board meeting and be able to talk. I'd love to see more of that throughout the year. And I'd also like to say thank you to everybody on the administrative staff and everybody else on the board. Who's been incredibly welcoming and helpful to us as new student representatives. Who has made sure to check in with us and try and help us be involved. And I'm very encouraged for the ability to move into the school year going forward to make sure that students feel like they're getting a say in the way that our schools are run. And to really bring student voice into the forefront and focus and have time to talk about the best ways to bring that in, in a real practical way. Not just to say that you have students, but to actually be listening to them. And I'm incredibly optimistic that that can be our path continuing to go forward. So thank you all for this excellent first session back in person.
Um, first of all, I'm very excited. This is our first, um, actual board meeting and it was amazing. Um, I'm very excited for this year and I do want to thank the parents for coming out and speaking and letting us know what you really think. And for trusting your board and feeling comfortable to, to come here. And talk to us about how you really feel. And I hope you guys know that, um, mental health is something that, you know, we are. We have talked about and that's something that we will be advocating for because as a student, I feel it. And as a student, I see your as a point. So, um, I just want to say thank you. And, um, of course, thank you to everybody who made us feel so comfortable today. Um, and yeah, I'm just very excited for this year and I think it's going to be amazing.
I say, um, so first one is like, thank everyone that's here as well. I think this is like, sorry, yeah. Um, so like, cause like I struggle a lot with anxiety. So sometimes I like kind of like ramble a lot and like freeze up. Um, and can get kind of quiet, but I think that like still like, I think today was, um, went a lot better than I thought it would. And I think, yeah. Um, and I would like, like the board members were all really welcoming and amazing people and hardworking people. I would like to thank you guys for coming here. And, you know, we live in such a polarized political climate. And I think that sometimes it could be really hard to talk about some of these things, but I'm glad that like we can still talk about it. You know, no fistfights, like we're, we're on to something. But I think that like, you know, I'm really excited for this year and I think that like we're going to do a lot of things. Like, you know, sometimes not everyone here is going to agree with everything that happens. But I think that like, we're still having these discussions, even though like sometimes you might feel like one voice is definitely louder than another. And there's some opinions that aren't being equally represented, but I think that at the same time, like we're trying to make that progress. And yeah, that gives me hope, especially since like sometimes it's easy to lose hope in like today's world.
Excellent agenda superintendent son.
All right, thank you. I too appreciate people being here. And I, I guess I just want to say that the guidelines and the mandates that have been put in place. And just the timing of those and the changing nature of those have made it incredibly difficult to make everybody happy. We certainly have not done that. We do, and I know that the notion of advocacy came up on a regular basis. And we do have regular meetings with the ODE in the governor's office. And just because we're invited to those meetings does not mean that our input is always taken or considered. Uh, we do have the opportunity to share it, which has been wonderful. But sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't taken into consideration. So, but that regular advocacy does occur. And I would say thank you to the board. I know that as elected volunteers, you are, you agonize over these decisions. And you can tell by the conversation that you're studying every side of it. And I think to the, to the community out there, just know that the board and the staff want nothing more than to return to a. The state that we originally were in where we have, we're not wearing masks, where we have every kid every day. So I just want to thank you for your service. I think we're in for another challenging, let's call it fall and be optimistic. We're in for another challenging fall and I appreciate the work that you do and the service that you do.
Since you always had to go last, Director Lopez, would you like to go first?
Sit on this side. Um, I think I just also wanted to say thank you for everyone that showed up and presented their input. I'm really glad that we're able to demonstrate cordial, respectful democracy in front of our new student reps. And I'm glad to have you all on board and excited for you all to be in person. I think that was one of the most disappointing things of last year is that our student reps had to do everything virtual. And we didn't get to build the relationships that, um, that we normally do, which I really appreciate. Um, I also want to, um, I think one of the things that you touched on, Mike, regarding our ability to advocate. And to really be involved at the state level. Um, I know that last year I was able to serve a lot on the serve return to school council from the governor's office. And be able to be in those rooms and try to push and advocate. And as, as you know, there are very different views represented there. Um, and I do take it very, you know, um, to heart that I am there to represent our community and the school district. And that's what I strive to do. And, um, and it is a very challenging space to be in, but just wanted to make sure that you all know that. We do have representation in trying to advocate at that level. Um, and also serving on the Oregon School Board Association and making sure that we're talking with our liability insurance providers. And talking to, which is PACE, um, for all they are aware. And, and having those conversations and those are all still happening and just because they're not something that is. You know, we're not able to see, doesn't mean it's not going on, but I wanted to make sure that people were aware that those conversations are happening. And as a, uh, OSBA board, we're trying to get into a meeting to have these conversations. Also around the mandates right now and, um, hopefully have more to share later on when that happens. Um, I wanted to also, um, uh, just appreciate Jordan and all the technology. Changes that have happened. It's like, one of the blessings of COVID is getting us those five to seven years leaps into technology. That we hadn't been able to and having our video, having people be able to provide comment via Zoom. Um, so that if it is challenging to get into here, they have access and are able to have input. I'm really appreciative of that. And I think the, the last thing that I had on here, well, actually to one more thing. Um, is that this work session wasn't really, is not really planned in our, our regular annual thing. That's why it happened at Tool Club. Normally all of our work sessions are after in the evenings. Um, but because the, this change happened, we wanted to make sure to provide an opportunity for input that normally we wouldn't even have. This was supposed to be our annual retreat for the board. Um, and we changed that so that we could have that. And lastly, I think I just want to thank all of you for everything that you do on behalf of our schoolchildren. I know that this work isn't easy. I know that everybody cares very deeply. Many of us have children in our school district and will very much like them to be in, in school. And, um, especially dealing with mental health issues and making sure that they're supported. And that's one thing that I am really appreciative of being on this board is that everybody has that care for our children. Are invested in this community. And I just want to just say how proud I am that I was re-elected to be on this board and happy to be here four more years. Thank you.
Director Ward.
I do want to echo, um, the warm welcome that I've received is also my first board meeting here. Um, I also appreciate the fact that the community comes out, the community has been emailing, has been making their voice known on how they feel about the mask mandate. And, uh, other issues. Uh, I appreciate the work that superintendent and staff go into. To give us the information that we need to research and to come to some conclusions and decisions. I know we talked a lot today about communication and transparency and look forward to that happening and continuing to happen. And letting our parents' community know what the plans are, why the plans are plans that they are. And looking forward to working for the next four years with all of you. Thank you.
Director Allen.
I think I have nothing to say because I've already stolen so much, but you would be wrong. So first.
No one would ever guess.
I know, I know. So first, I'm really excited that we get to be here in person. I realized this morning I could not find my name badge, uh, that we were supposed to bring with this meeting. That I have not been in the administration center for, I think, a year and a half. So pretty exciting. I did find an magnetic name tag. So I have this. Um, it's me. Yeah, a good, good job, good job. Um, so I still, I don't know where it is. I'll, I'll try and find it or we'll get it. But, um, I, I just, I, I'm overjoyed that we got to be in person and welcome you all in person, student representatives and Nancy and Monique. I'm so glad that you get to be here in person and I agree with what Erica said. Um, not being able to do that with our prior student representatives was a great disappointment. So it was awesome to get to chit chat with you all a little bit. Um, and I know that a regular board meeting is incredibly. Tolling on cabinet and other staff. And so I can't imagine what a lift a full day retreat amendment is. So I really appreciate all of you. Um, and I'll, uh, that's all that I'll say.
Rumor has that we have Director Kim on the line.
I am here. Hello, everybody. Uh, but Chair Watson, would it be okay if I went after Director Thomas? So right before you speak, just giving me a couple more minutes.
Yeah, not a problem.
Thank you so much.
You don't know she has an infant at home and she got an SOS call. So, uh, Director Martinez.
Um, yeah, it's up to me to echo, welcome. Members, um, I want to congratulate Mark on his first officiating of, you know, all day board. I think he did a great job. Um, so, uh, yeah. And I, I'm really looking forward to having my child go to school every day, um, full-time. And I know she's looking forward to it, especially since her gym should be complete from what I understood today at McKinney. And she's really dying to find out what's inside of that. So, um, yeah.
Place Chair Thomas.
Uh, thank you to all of the staff and everyone who does a phenomenal job in supporting us. And this volunteer slash voluntold slash, I can't believe you are crazy enough to do this position. Um, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Um, I, I do want to say that this is, uh, this is a privilege that I don't take lightly. And I'm enjoying it and I'm going to continue to do it. I'm looking forward to doing it with this group for the next four years. I am blessed beyond measure to be around three very vocal and dynamic and vibrant young people. And I hope to get more and more students to come to the board meeting. And I think we ought to focus on that. And thank you so much for just being yourself. It is incredible. It's awesome. And I really, really appreciate it. And this is our first meeting. Yeah, we did it. And we're looking forward to doing a lot more on behalf of all of our children. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Director Kim, is now a good time or would you like to go after I go?
No, now is a great time. Thank you so much. And first and foremost, I apologize for having to barge out. Um, I have a infinite home who has a very, very high fever. And so, um, appreciate your grace and patience and also a huge shout out to Jordan and the, and the tech team. For making this, um, hybrid model possible. I can see all of you right now with that fancy camera that we have. I know you can't see me, but I can see you. So this is absolutely amazing and I am excited for the, the opportunity that we get to. Um, engage and host a wide variety of public members who otherwise wouldn't be able to participate in these meetings. So huge shout out to Jordan. Again, thank you so much. Um, I have a couple of comments. And possibly a question, Mike, that you, you may need to follow up with me on separately, just because I, I didn't get to hear the tail end. Of the conversation regarding the legal liability we have regarding, um, i- if we were to not go. With the guidance as opposed to the mandate. So in, in the case that, um, in the case that. Masks aren't mandated, but they are still strongly encouraged in the guidance. One of the questions I have, um, and the what, what I understood is that we as a board would still be. We as a district would still be liable if we chose not to go again, uh, go with the guidance. And that's where I'm wondering if we're able to push back on that. So that, um, so that really the guidance is. Purely just a guidance and not, uh, something that if you read the fine lines, we would have to mandate it. Otherwise, we would, um, be liable as a district. Um, and so I don't know who, you know, at what level those conversations need to happen. But I, I echo the comments of, of the public that we are a very large district here in the state of Oregon. And I can only imagine that other larger districts similar to ours may have some of the same concerns when it comes to. A guidance not being a mandate, but us being held liable as if it were a mandate. And so I'm not sure if there's any type of, um, a, a pushback we can do. Or have our liability match really what, what the guidance is or not. So, um, just wanted to, to put that out there. Um, and then secondly, I do. And then secondly, I do appreciate everyone who came to, to speak and testify today. I also want to acknowledge the folks who weren't able to testify in person, but instead had written us public comments and even the PAC members who have given their feedbacks. I know that the comments that we've received from the public have been really wide and varied all across, all across the board when it comes to the mask mandate. And I want to recognize that the mask mandate is, it, it, I know it's been dominating a lot of our conversation around the return to fall plan and kind of what that process looks like. But that is just one element of what the fall plan is. And I want to acknowledge the cabinet and Superintendent Mike Scott for the incredible work that your team has done in, in, in terms of taking all of the orders that have come down and, and really implementing, implementing them in a way and giving us a proposal for, for how to return our students safely into the classroom, which I think is the goal for, for all of us. And so I do support the, the fall proposal as it is, as, as it has been presented. And I look forward to how the mandates will change as, as our numbers become better and it becomes safer for our students to return, to return as, as in a normal state as possible. So yeah, I just appreciate all of your time. And I'm sorry that I can't be there in person right now to finish off our first in-person meeting. But I appreciate just the advances in technology to, to join you here in this platform. So thank you. That is all.
Yes, big kudos to the tech department. For those of you who were around, last time we tried to do this, it did not go that great. Maybe 20 months ago or whatever. So yes, very well done. We even had comment from somebody in Wilsonville who could see the room. Welcome to our new members. Thank you so much. I look forward to serving with you for a year. Welcome to our old members. That's right. Is that? Oh, my, oh, I might not be the board chair again next year, but. Yes. And thank you all for your support and your kind words in the board chair role. Thank you, Erica, for your guidance and that. I will give, as I mentioned upstairs, a heads up, I will not be in this country for the next meeting. I, I will try to figure out a way that I can preside. If not, we'll figure something out. Virtual is great, right? Virtual is awesome. Connection in Ireland should be fun. Although it might be the night that I'm in the castle. I don't know if they have wifi. I'll show you. We, we have an Airbnb castle, literally. It's amazing. Thank you to all the staff. The work is, that we put in is crazy. And thank you for everything you've done. I would suggest a couple of things that we have received many emails of people support, you know, thank you for upholding the governors. We don't really have a choice. So great job on doing the thing, doing the things where we have a choice, creating good options for places where we have options. So great job there. And, and I would suggest that we, that many of the voices that would have come to say, you know, please keep masks on, didn't come because of the proposal was released on Thursday and I read it. So I don't know about your emails, but the general board emails we've been getting have turned much more in that fashion lately. And the emails I've been getting have been turning much more of, thank you for making sure that we all have masks in school. So for what it's worth, I know maybe some people don't think that that's true, but that I've been receiving many more emails that way than the other way. I also think a couple made the point about, you know, transparency and whatnot. And I, I think, you know, many, many things were impacted by the pandemic in ways that we couldn't expect. I think we all did the best job we possibly could. And in hindsight, there are things that we could have done better. And I think some things that seem like they're obfuscation, some things that people might think that we're not being transparent or being hidden or happening behind. That was not the case at all. It's just without being in this room, I think we struggled to figure out ways to communicate the process over Zoom. And as we all scream into the void and you have to be, there's no serendipitous conversations. You don't see anybody on the street. You don't have an opportunity to discuss things. You only, you're only on your Facebook page and the groups you belong to and your Twitter feed. And the only people that you talk to are the ones who come to your Zoom invite. So I couldn't be happier to be back in person and have serendipitous conversations with people on the street. Thank you all for being here. I look forward to returning to this room and to September. With that, this meeting is adjourned.